Kevin, you're on mute.
All right, let's try that again. Welcome, everyone. I call the July 20, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are public hearings on middle housing code amendments and parking reductions near frequent transit and a study session on the bike plan. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format, and this is our first hybrid meeting, so please forgive us as we stumble through. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. The public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today, and I believe Senior Planner Boyd has checked in those who wish to speak. People wishing to submit written comments were also encouraged to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the silent sheets, and we have a sheet, right? First time, want to be sure we get, there is a sheet there, we just didn't, and push it. Imagine Bothell's notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public on providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of commissioners, and I'll go by position number. I'm Chair Kevin Kiernan. Amanda Dodd.
Present.
Present remotely. Carrie Westerbeck.
Here.
On the dais with us. Karsten Kurd.
Present.
Remotely. Claire Robson.
Present.
Remotely. Tony Anders.
Present.
And Sarah Gustafson.
Here.
All right, so all the commissioners are here either on the, either in person or remotely. Also attending, we have Deputy Community Development Director Ashley Winchell and Kirsten Mant, Senior Planner. Any others we should introduce? All right, remotely, we have Senior Planner Dave Boyd, and I believe we may have other staff coming in later when their agenda items come up. So lastly, before I begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines for all meeting attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking and unmute before you try to speak. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For the commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question, and I've asked staff to help me with that, looking both on the dais here and on the screen. It may be a challenge, so if I don't catch you right away, no offense intended. If you wish to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I'll call on you as soon as I see you. This will avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. So on to our first agenda item. First item is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as signup sheets for those who wish to speak in person. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM were forwarded to all commissioners as part of the record. This is time for items not on tonight's agenda. So if we have individuals who'd like to speak to items which are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Looking in the audience, I see none and seeing no indication via Zoom. We will then move on. Our next item is approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the June 15th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Gustafson.
I move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Kurd, your hand is still up. Would you like to second?
I second the motion.
All right, thank you. The minutes to the June 15th meeting have been moved and seconded. Any comment, any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the June 15th meeting?
Hi.
I see all hands up. So meeting minutes are adopted. Thank you all. New business, do we have any new business?
We'd like to formally introduce our new addition to the strategic planning team. This is Kirsten Mant. She's been with the City of Bothell for about four years. She's been in our Development Services group, and she's recently been promoted to Senior Planner. So she'll be filling the role that Nathan Lamb was previously in. I'll pass it off to Kirsten, if you just want to say hi, you know. Yeah, just wanted to say hi. I know I've met a couple of you before and worked with some of you before. Excited to continue working here in a strategic capacity and getting to know everyone here better, so.
Well, welcome. We're glad to have you with us. Look forward to working with you, and I'm sure Senior Planner Boyd is very happy to have another planner working with him.
Indeed.
Any other new business? Seeing none. We will then move on to the public hearing on the middle housing code amendments. Senior Planner Boyd, would you like to lead us through this?
I will, and we are also joined by Sierra Carson from OTAC and Mike Stanger from Arch. I'm going to promote Mike to a panelist. And made Sierra a co-host, but we didn't quite go over all of this beforehand, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try sharing my screen. If that doesn't work, we'll have, we'll see if Sierra is able to do that. Okay, are you seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start it off, I'm going to pass it off to Sierra, and then I'll wrap it up. So this is a continued public hearing on the Bothell Middle Housing Code Amendments. The agenda for tonight is to present updates to the proposed code amendments based on input that we got from Planning Commission on June 15th. And to discuss some new timing for the code amendments. On June 15th, I did inform Planning Commission that we were applying for another Department of Commerce grant to address middle housing implementation. We just got word yesterday that we have received that grant. So we'll be giving you a little more information about that. And that is the reason for, in the memo, the staff recommendation, we were hoping that perhaps we'd be ready tonight to make a recommendation for, Commission to make a recommendation to council. But we're now recommending that you continue the hearing to a date uncertain. We still need to do some, some planning around how we're going to integrate this new grant with our current work and and give a little more thought to how some of that work might change the zoning amendments that are being proposed or, or might provide information that, that we think Planning Commission should consider before, before making a recommendation to council. So with that, I will pass it off to Sierra to go through the, the updates to date, which includes some questions which we'll come back to at the end, I think.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave, and good evening, commissioners. We have a few short slides to run through tonight. And these are the main updates to the proposed middle housing code amendments that have been done since we last met. I'll quickly run through the highlights. There are a few questions scattered throughout the slides. The presentation's pretty short today, though, so like Dave said, we'll come back to those questions at the end once we've run through each of the different items tonight. And then, Dave, also feel free to jump in if I miss anything at any time. So we're going to start tonight on affordable housing. Under the proposed code amendments, affordable housing will be required in all new residential subdivisions. At least 10% of the new dwelling units created with the development must be set aside as either affordable for income-eligible buyers or if those units are going to be renter-occupied, the affordable units must be set aside for income-eligible renters. Additionally, we've raised the threshold to trigger the affordable housing requirement from five units to 10 units. For example, any development between 10 and 19 units must set aside at least one unit, and then, you know, 20 to 29, you would set aside two affordable units. We have a few questions here that we'll come back to at the end. Dave, can you move to the next slide, please? Our next topic tonight is on lot size averaging. The proposed code amendments state that all subdivisions will be eligible for lot size averaging. The lot sizes may vary throughout the subdivision as long as the averages of all the lots in the development still meet the zone minimum requirement. No individual lot can be reduced below the minimum lot size for the next census zone. For example, lots in the 9,600 zone cannot be reduced to below 8,400 square feet, and lots in the 8,400 zone cannot be reduced below 7,200 square feet. These proposed amendments to lot averaging also allow for a 20% reduction in the required lot circle. And our question on here, that we'll come back to at the end, is regarding whether these lot size averaging allowances should apply only to subdivisions that incorporate middle housing developments. Next slide, please.
And I'll just jump in here. Currently, we allow lot size averaging for, in, only in, or the lot reduction only in the 9,600 zone, so this basically kind of simplifies that reduction and applies it to the other single-family zones.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dave. We've also updated the approach to the middle housing density bonus. So under the proposed code amendments, new subdivisions will be subject to a density bonus. The proposed middle housing density bonus will allow subdivisions that include middle housing units, such as duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, to increase their density up to 20%. That density bonus can be increased to 40% if that subdivision is close to transit and trail access. And our last item tonight is updates to the ADU regulations. The proposed code amendments to the ADU regulations include allowing up to two ADUs, either attached or detached per single-family dwelling unit. These regulations include also allowing one ADU allowed on other residential lots, such as lots with a duplex or a triplex. In order to differentiate between a multi-unit house and a single-family home with an ADU, the applicant, during the application and permitting process, will need to specify what type of development they are proposing during that process. For example, if a homeowner wants to carve out an additional living space in their home, they would need to decide whether they're creating a unit that's accessory to their main home or whether they want to turn the entire home into duplex with two separate units. These updates to the ADU code would also require one additional parking space for an ADU, but this requirement would be waived if the property has access to on-street parking and is close to trail and transit access, similar to other parking reductions in the code. I believe that is all of our specific items, and I'll turn it back over to Dave to talk about the new timing and the grant funding opportunities.
Thanks, Sierra. So like I mentioned, we are proposing to make, place a hold on making recommendations to council pending this additional work that we're going to be able to do with the, the middle housing implementation grant that we were, we learned, we had received yesterday. We will have $100,000 to do, do more work around middle housing and $20,000 specifically to engage with community-based organizations. And that is in, to the end of meeting our goals for diversity, equity, and inclusion and using a racial equity analysis as part of that. It's all in support of adopting middle housing types, and it will also provide funding for us to analyze displacement possibilities or threats and then develop anti-displacement strategies. These were something that we knew that we wanted to work on, but previously, our approach was to get the zoning changes in place and then follow with some of these other implementation strategies. But we do think it's worth putting it all on, on the zoning changes in case there are some things that come up in this, this additional outreach and analysis that, that might cause us to want to tweak the approach. A big part of this is additional community engagement, and you will see in some of the comment letters have been critical that we haven't found a way to reach out to all the single-family property owners in the city. And so this will be looking into how, how we might be able to do that or do a better job of that going forward. And it also provides time and money for us to do an additional analysis of utilities, fire, and building code implications. So we have started that work, and we have been pretty confident that, that that the, the changes that we are suggesting are consistent with those there. And there are statewide building code changes that are in the works that will facilitate new middle housing, development of new middle housing types under the International Residential Code. But again, those, those discussions are ongoing. We've met a couple of times with our utility division along with representatives from Alderwood and North Shore Utility Districts, and that's been a very fruitful discussion. Not sure just yet whether there's any of that feedback that's, that's going to cause us to tweak the code requirements, but, but we think it's worth taking some time to, to make sure of that. So, and I also wanted to say that when we do look, loop back and, and consider some of those questions, I do want to give Mike Stanger from Arch an opportunity to, to speak to some of the affordable housing recommendations that are in the draft and, and some of the additional analysis that, that he'll be doing on that. So the recommended, recommended action then would be a motion and vote to continue the public hearing to a date uncertain. And since we're not continuing to a date certain, we would then be giving, publishing a public notice when that, that date is determined. We're hoping not to push it out too far, and the, both the current grant and the new grant have provisions that, that will certainly encourage us to adopt any amendments by April 1st of 2023. We're hoping to do it sooner than that and then to finish all of the work in the grants by, by the end of June of 2023. So, so with that, we didn't put it on the slide here, but open enough for any clarifying questions from Commission, followed by public testimony. I know that we have at least one online participant that wants to testify, and I'll leave it up to those in the room to tell me if there are any others in the room. We did hear from some that intended to, to attend and testify. And then deliberations, that one, that's when we can go back to the slides and, and get your input on those questions, because we would like to get that input at least tonight, even though we're not making a recommendation, so that we can take that into consideration as, as we move forward. So I'm going to stop sharing, so we can all see each other again.
All right, since there is a reasonable possibility the code will change, I don't think we should go through the potential code amendments or the findings, but you did have those specific questions. So do you want to, to bring those up for us?
Well.
Or do you want to just talk us through?
I guess I would suggest that first, if there are any clarifying questions, general questions, and, and we've identified some questions, but if planning commissioners have questions too, we can, we can address those and then take public testimony, and then, and then we can go into a discussion. And that's, that's when I was thinking we would go back to the specific questions.
All right, that sounds good. So commissioners, clarifying questions? Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you. Commissioner Westerbeck here, just clarification, is this a good time to speak to the, the delay that due to the grants and so forth that Senior Planner Boyd brought up? Are we going to discuss that later or bring it to a vote or, or discuss it in some way?
I would say if you want some clarification on, on, and why we're doing that, this would be a good time to do that.
I've got a proposal, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time.
That I probably would say for after public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Understood.
All right, so we'll come back to that. Commissioner Anders.
Thank you. There were a couple of places in the slides where we talk about building near transit and close to trails. Do we have any sort of specificity regarding what near and close will mean? Or will that be left up to interpretation at the time of requesting permitting, building, that sort of thing?
We have, we're building on, on what we did. This is all coming out of what Commission recommended and Council adopted with the corner lot duplex requirements. And so for those, the, the code says that any corner lot within two mile, or I'm sorry, within half a mile of frequent transit, and that is defined, I think, for trips per hour, a stop that has four trips per hour for 12 hours a day, or access to a regional trail. And at that time, the recommendation was to make it a, a simple radius from those areas. We've since gotten some comments, and in fact, there was a version of state legislation that didn't pass, but, but there was being considered that said that the proximity to, to transit at least should be based on walking distance. So we, we have had some discussion about that. I think there was consensus there. One of the comments is that those half-mile radii, in some cases, cross over the river or over freeways. So they, they would include properties that really don't have anywhere near half-mile access. So that we've, we've crafted the code to reflect that, the walking distance requirement. And then it's up to the applicant to, to demonstrate that we're, we're not mapping those areas out, partly because those bus stops and the transit levels do change.
Thank you.
Okay, other commissioner, clarifying questions or comments? Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thanks for going over some of the things that the grant would allow us to do. I was very interested to see that racial equity analysis and anti-displacement strategies could be part of that grant. Do you know, based on other cities, what kinds of questions might be asked and what kind of strategies might be considered so that we can start thinking about them now? Thank you.
I have to confess, we haven't gotten into that in much detail, so we will be working with consultants. We'll be having discussions with OTAC about what part of the, this work they could do on a continuing basis. We will, we've also identified that we will be working with the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant, Shannon Kelly Ray. And we are also working with other arch jurisdictions that have also applied for, and I assume, received these grants so that we can kind of pool our efforts and tackle those together. And in some cases, the same community-based organization might be, might work with more than one of the jurisdictions. So, so there's the opportunity to do some coordination and, on that, on those levels. But we haven't gotten into any details about exactly what those strategies might be.
Ashley Winchell, Deputy Director, and I would, I can add that we can send the copy of the application that was approved to the Planning Commission because it outlines each of the deliverables that we've proposed and then the steps to it. And a part of the grant requirement was this racial equity analysis, and so it, I believe, is based off of HB 1220 requirements. And so the great thing about this grant is we're required to do this analysis one way or another per new GMA requirements, and so this provides us funding to do that. And so we can provide that to you all. I think it'll help kind of show the full picture of the existing work and how this fits into it. One of the things that was delayed with this work or deferred was comprehensive plan amendments to support middle housing. And so this helps us start looking at our comprehensive plan, prepare for the comprehensive plan update to figure out what we may need to do to better support middle housing in the comprehensive plan so that we have policies and regulations that are tied together and support each other. And so when we have these conversations with the public, it gives us opportunity to talk about both policy and regulation with the public and hear more from people about what we can do to better represent some of the things we're hearing from the community and then also understand things we may need to tweak or, or think about as we move these regulations and policies forward.
That'd be great. I think there'd be a lot of interest among the commissioners in seeing that, so thank you. We'll look forward to that. Other commissioners? So Dave, do you have a sense and timing of this?
Well, like I said, we do have two deadlines. April 1st for adopting any amendments and of 2023, and, and June 30th for And and June 30th for completing work. But like I said, we're we're hoping that it doesn't drag out that long. I think there are some things that we will be identifying in with this new grant that really won't affect zoning, the zoning amendments. So the I think our approach will be to really zero in on anything that that might alter or or give give the commission some input to that they should consider before finalizing the zoning code amendments. And then going ahead and adopting those as soon as possible. And 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 then really then there'll be additional work to be done in terms of implementation and processes. And and probably the analysis about displacement will that very well could come following the zoning code amendments. Although, as we get into it, we might find some things there that that we want to include in the in the code amendment. So we're still sorting that out.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a balance between getting that community outreach and the interest of some and moving quickly to address these issues. So keep in touch. All right. So with that, I think we'll go to the public comment portion of the hearing. And I know we have at least one individual who wants to speak with us. Would you like to?
And are there any there in person?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
So who do you want to do first, online or in person?
Why don't we go ahead and do the in person ones first?
All right. So would you please step to the microphone, introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes to comment?
Hi, my name is Justin Buffard. I'm a longtime Bothell resident. I moved here in 2010. It's my only home I purchased here and I've lived here since before it was even the city of Bothell for me, anyway. I'm here to speak for the middle housing amendments. I received the amendments from Dave. I've been working with Dave and Carrie and and such. And on the topic mostly of parking requirements for ADUs, the current proposal makes it extremely hard for people who are trying to convert an existing residence into or to convert some existing space into an ADU. The main issue is that the additional parking requirement can be impossible to achieve, like in my case. There's sort of a duality that you need additional parking, but you're not allowed to create new parking that isn't in front of your driveway. And it effectively makes it impossible for me to cure this problem, even though, and this may be impossible to see. But I do have a picture showing, and I've shared this in the public comments, and I can share this photo, that I have ample parking in front and ample parking on the other side of the street. I have a corner lot. And I have a security camera that could show that every single night, there's not one person parked there. So my feedback here is that, especially for ADUs, that the question shouldn't be so much. Do you have to add additional parking? Is it is it could it be reasonable to believe that the person in the ADU would have access to reasonable parking? And in my case, there's no question. There's tons and tons across the street. There's some directly in front of my home. My driveway is actually wide enough to do four, but there are sorry, there are curb cutouts that are in the way that were added by spring ridges I did not ask for. So they actually made my parking situation work worse. My truck actually has to climb over a curb cutout that wasn't there before. So that was a nice little surprise for me. But anyway, the city of Portland, Los Angeles, and what am I saying? Seattle both said zero for ADUs, which was in the first draft of the zoning amendments. And I think that kind of makes more sense, especially or at least especially for existing conversions. It's just it's really hard to cure something where I can't even do it. I have a very, very large lot, but I can't do it. I can't add parking, but I need more parking. Therefore, I can't do my conversion. It's yeah. So on the topic of setbacks, I was a little disappointed to see that we didn't do 5.5. It's still 515. It creates a sort of a patchwork of setbacks on the side because it's not defined if it has to be on one side or the other. So some people do 5.5 or sorry, 510. Some people do 75, 75. Some people do something in between. And it creates irregularly spaced lots where, at least as far as I can tell, most jurisdictions just do 5.5 for set side yard setbacks. And that's, I think, a little bit less debatable compared to the front and rear yard setbacks. I personally believe that we should move to just 5.5 and just be consistent and simplify things rather than having this sort of strange 15 total at the minimum five on one side type of thing. I think it would just make things simpler, create more, what do you call it, like spacing that's consistent between homes and doesn't create homes that have like some big amount, some small amount, something in between. It just if you look at a map, it should look fairly consistent, but right now it would be like, it would be a little bit off, just a little bit off everywhere. And it creates inefficient use of land. And that's that was one of the goals listed in the the code amendments. And the final thing I have is the topic of building height. I'm interested in providing middle housing in my backyard. I can with the proposed subdivision rules, I could subdivide. But one of my problems is is if I wanted to do like a townhouse style with the garage on the bottom and living space above, which is a pretty popular style right now, without the building height improvements up to 35 feet, then it becomes really hard to do that. And this again speaks to parking and whatnot. I want to provide a garage. I think it's best to have a townhouse rather than like, like I own, I'm an experienced landlord and I have duplexes, fourplex, things like that. And my fourplex is your traditional fourplex with the stairs in the middle. There are people above and below. I think people prefer not having people above and below them. And for me to provide townhouse style duplexes, I need the ability to have that garage on the lower level and just give me a bit of extra room, breathing room, because I've looked at some sample plans. And I don't think I've seen one that is 30 feet or below. They're all between 30 and 35 feet because the garage adds a bit of height. And so I was hoping that the middle housing initiative would allow us to gain that 35 foot if if possible.
All right. Any closing comments?
Yeah, basically, the 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 closing comment is I'm hoping that the city can help sort of get obstacles out of the way for the citizens and and people who have existing lots to help be part of the problem. Instead of say, like Spring Ridge is destroying a bunch of forests, creating a bunch of single family homes, which creates more sprawl, which makes it so like, oh, I guess we don't need transit because it's not dense enough. But then we just keep destroying more and more and more. So just allow the citizens to help kind of remove the regulations that that have been successful in other cities. And I'm really hoping that we can get one more change here. But thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. And we did receive your an electronic version of your comments as well. So thank you. Anyone else in the room wishing to comment on this item?
While we're waiting for any others, I wanted to point out that that lady email that you got from Mr. Buffard. I will enter into the exhibit says exhibit 13. And then I also this afternoon emailed the commission a number of other exhibits that we've received in the last two days, which I'll enumerate now. I meant to do this earlier. Exhibit seven from Robert Farah, exhibit eight from artist Schmiegel. Actually, that may be a mistake, mistake. Exhibit nine from Mr. Downey. Exhibit 10 from Mr. La Master, Dennis La Master. Exhibit 11 from artist Schmiegel. Exhibit 12 from Kurt Wellstein and exhibit 13 from Justin Buffard. And I apologize, some of the the file names and and headers may there may be a few errors in those. I had to put those together pretty hastily, but we'll get those cleaned up and to include with the findings when we do move forward with recommendations.
All right. Thanks, Dave. And seeing as we are likely to continue, we'll have the opportunity to review those. So our next commenter, please introduce yourself.
Hi, Dave. My name is Bob Faray. Oh, there we go. Bob Faray is my name. Don't worry about the mispronunciation. Justin, everything he said, I I applaud. Well done. So I came here today to talk about this amendment. And what I'm going to say not too specifically about that is I think the city of Bothell has done a heck of a job. I mean, this is a great town, so you should be commended. So whatever you decide to do, I just want you to remember to respect the land. That's it was the greatest IPO ever invented. So we have to respect the land. And so if you can provide things that tie into the community, which this has, it has all the beauty, I really would support that. So my wife and I, we can't find a place to live. We decided to sell our house where we raised our kids and they went to school. And we were going to downsize. Well, within for an hour drive anywhere on the compass, we can't find what we're looking for. But then we did. There's two places within 15 minute drive from here that without traffic is the perfect community. If you change this ordinance here, I'll build some and I'll move in myself. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and I look forward to moving here soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farah. Faray. Faray. Right. Let me see if there are others before we come back. Anyone else in the room wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none.
I apologize. There was some something mentioned here that I forgot to comment on.
The on the subdivision aspect.
Reintroduce yourself, please.
My name is Justin Buffard. I was here earlier. I hadn't prepared something for the subdivision part because it was just brought up here in the presentation. It was asked whether it should be limited to middle housing. I would ask that the answer be no, because the way I see this going is you may have some irregularly shaped lots that would allow you with the lot averaging to create a new lot, but would not be conducive to say like a side by side duplex or something like that. But would allow to increase housing stock anyway, like in the corner of it or something along those lines. Because with the current rules, you have to have whole lots. And if you can't reach that number, it's effectively wasted land or you have to create sort of a larger lot with what is going to effectively be again wasted land. Because somebody will either have like a weird place for a yard or or something along those lines. So if if it were not limited to just middle housing and could be an SFR, a good developer could create a reduced lot that's kind of in the corner of an existing lot, but add middle housing elsewhere where it's it's a little bit better. But the again, the goal is efficient use of land, increasing housing stock. I'd rather take one additional SFR than nothing, right? It's still better than nothing. So that that was my comment on that. So I'm hoping the answer comes back no.
All right. Thank you. And will you turn off the microphone too, please? Thank you. Dave, do you have some?
Yes, I have two attendees. I'm going to promote Ryan Donahue first. He was the first to arrive. And Ryan, you can mute or unmute your microphone and introduce yourself and have three minutes to testify.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And it's wonderful to be here. I apologize, though, that I'm not was unable to be there in person today. But I do want to make sure to know that or that you all know that I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to comment virtually. My name is Ryan Donahue, and I am the Chief Advocacy Officer at Habitat for Humanity, Seattle, King and Kidattas Counties, as well as the co-chair of the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. On behalf of Habitat for Humanity, I want to take a moment here and express our full throated support, not only for your work on these missile media, sorry, these middle housing code amendments today, and not just for your work on around parking reduction near frequent transit, but honestly, for all of the amazing work that you all have been engaging in over the last few years. Your work has really highlighted just what an amazing place Bothell is, and you deserve immense praise for that. I am here today in strong support of the work that you were doing, particularly around the middle missing or the middle housing code amendments proposal that's included in your discussion today. I'm used to having to come to these meetings and having a list of recommended adjustments that I would encourage you to consider. Usually, there's four, five, six, seven things that I'll have listed out. Today, however, my job is pretty easy because you all, as commissioners and your planning staff, have already done all of the hard work. I basically just get to say this, amazing job. Thank you. That being said, though, I wouldn't be doing my job if I just simply said this was amazing and walked away. I do have one small thing that I would urge you to consider, and it's more of a mindset issue. Whether it's on middle missing or what's on middle housing or any of your work around affordable housing, make sure to include homeownership as a part of the way you're thinking when it comes to affordable housing. ADUs, DADUs, Plexes, these kind of things are amazing options, not just for affordable rental housing opportunities, but also affordable homeownership opportunities. And I would urge you to frame your efforts in that context, thinking about affordable housing being affordable homeownership as well as affordable rental. As you continue this work on this and so many of your other future efforts, I would also urge you to continue to think bold. As you're finding state already, we are in a housing crisis. There are, there is an urgent need to allow and facilitate new housing in every one of our towns and cities. You all are doing your part to be a part or to help fix that. And I thank you for the work you've already done and the work you're continuing to do. Authorizing these changes is a big step along that path to resolving this crisis. And I thank you for treating this with the urgency and seriousness that this crisis demands. I look forward to being able to come back at future meetings and be able to continue to celebrate the work that you all are doing. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that here today.
Thank you for your comments. Dave?
Hey, and the other, I guess I'm not sure that they want to testify, but we've got Laura Sagan Hughes and Aaron Sagan in the attendee room. I'll promote them to panelists and send Ryan back to attendee. And Lauren and or Aaron, when you're ready, go ahead and unmute, I see you have.
Just to just to clarify, we were going to speak separately, but on the same account. So I'll pass that back to her.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for inviting us to join you. My name's Laura Sagan, and I've lived in Bothell for 22 years and in a in an old house. And I am definitely happy. I would like to see the city legalize more housing options such as middle housing. And and I also believe that we do need to increase is certainly look at height restriction increases because that's the place to to get some some additional height and some square footage and help with that creativity and with these housing plans. And in in the last 15 years, on two occasions, we approached the city of Bothell to request cluster housing with property that we owned on West Hill, and we were denied. And so today, that is now just two more subdivisions. And, you know, I don't think anybody likes to see more sprawl. And that's what, in my opinion, subdivisions represent. And it adds to climate change and loss of habitat. And in the last two years, we've had bobcats, two bobcats and numbers of deers just walking through our property because their habitat is vanishing. And another deer just showed up last weekend and it's we're close to Boffaway. I don't know where they go once they leave my property, but I'm really concerned about that, too. It's just the the woods are disappearing, the buildable land is disappearing. We have to do something that's creative that will save as much habitat, not just for animals, but for ourselves as as possible. And I think we can be very creative about it and still common sense and and be flexible. But the height restriction adds some flexibility and retain as many trees as possible while while still providing maximum density. So I I would like to see this go forward, and I certainly support you in every effort in that in that direction. So thank you very much for your time, and my daughter will be speaking next.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're next.
Hi, do I just start?
Yes, please do and try to limit it to three minutes if you can.
Okay, well, um, hi, I'm thank you for letting me speak today and provide comment at your meeting.
And introduce yourself. Start with your name, please.
I was I was just going there. My my name is Aaron Sagan, and as you could probably assume from the slightly awkward but joint Zoom account platform thing that we're doing here, we live in a multi generational home. So I'm speaking as somebody. So I'm speaking as somebody who lives in that kind of household. And I've lived in Bothell, I would say continuously for the last 10 years. We moved back from North Carolina after I went to school there, and we started a family here. We have two small children. And so I, you know, so I wanted to provide comment actually at the first meeting ever because Bothell really needs to legalize middle housing. And, you know, to be honest, like the recommendations I fully support and endorse. I mean, as much as I can read, because those were a lot of pages of a lot of a lot of planning jargon and engineering jargon. I mean, maybe not engineering jargon, but um, and, you know, just two, two things that I would actually like to see the city go beyond, because truth be told, it's like a fourplex. It's an increase in density, but from what I've been reading from people who write on this topic and, you know, study this and even do work on it, like architects and other public planners online, it's it's actually still pretty conservative considering what our needs are with growth and with climate change and affordability. And as the previous speaker said, or two previous speakers ago, we're kind of at crisis point with a few different issues. I'd say I'm sure that this won't be reflected in your changes in the middle housing amendments. But, you know, why stop at fourplex? Why not go to sixplex? There's a beautiful sixplex across from where we live. And like my mother said, we live on the edge of downtown in a west hill, just like a block or two up from Bothell Way. And it's it's a really lovely sixplex, like it's well integrated into the neighborhood. And the kind of funny thing is, is that, you know, when I attend hearings like this or kind of community forum types, I hear a lot of people talk about how they're concerned about character, which I think is kind of ironic sometimes because I don't know if we're on the same page about what that means. On on my street, literally is like, like side by side, these kind of examples of a multifamily building that's actually very attractive and well designed. And then a single family house right next to it that actually is like quite an eyesore to look at, you know, and pass every day. And so I just I want to kind of push that concern that I often hear and that narrative that multifamily, that increased density somehow inherently means like a loss of of neighborhood character or architectural character. And I just want to push against that because that's not true. And it'd be very insensitive of me to show you a photo of my neighbors' houses, but I'll just tell you that the multifamily building is very tasteful. And the single family home next to it, not so much. So I don't think that really should be a driver in people's decision making whether they support an increase in density with middle housing. Also, I say I would encourage the council and the commission to just adopt and no parking requirement measure or changes completely. I think reductions, I can't help but see them just as undermining any gains in density. And why is density is exactly what we need right now for issues like affordability and lack thereof? And then a concern that I can't even really fully get into, but just to scratch the surface of is climate change and sprawl being a huge contributor to it. And and with affordability, I mean, I grew up in this area. My great grandparents moved to this area, though they weren't born here. And, I mean, I have family, cousins, my brother in law, siblings. The closest houses they could buy, one was in Burien, and the other one is in Lake Stevens. Nobody can buy in this area and like not a single person in my personal network. Like nobody I actually know who I grew up with has been able to afford anything within, I don't know what kind of mile radius, but it's a lot. And so I know there's many people with similar stories and concerns. Their children or their grandchildren can't live close by, and that really affects the way a community grows. And the loyalty, I think, people also have. And let me just see if there's anything. I'm sure I'm at three, three minutes. I haven't been timing myself.
Yeah, so if you could bring any closing comments, thank you.
Yeah. You know, I think I just kind of nailed it. Yeah, I mean, and I would be happy to to speak again, you know, once you. I it sounds like this deadline has been extended because you're kind of pending on grants and what and how that'll affect funding and all that stuff. But this is a really, really important issue to me, and it's for very many reasons, both personal and political and everything else. So thank you so much.
All right, thanks for your comments. And as you heard earlier, it has been extended, and there will be some more outreach. So there'll be additional opportunities to comment. So thank you. So Dave, others?
I have no others in the the online attendee room.
Okay, and confirming none of you out there want to speak? Okay, so with that, we'll close the public comments and move on to our deliberations and actions, so closing the public hearing.
You don't need to close the public hearing.
We're going to continue the yeah, okay. But we are closing the the comments. And you had some questions you wanted feedback on now at this point?
Yeah, let me once again share my screen. Get to that. Find out where I was here. Okay, I believe this was the first. Let me just go back one more, yes. So the first questions we had had to do with the affordable housing amendments. And and last time around, we already had suggested the increase in the threshold from five to 10 units. And so, but I wasn't sure that we got consensus on that. I think we got pretty strong feedback from the commission that that they did want to increase the the limit to 10 units to match the 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 new limit for short flats or for for full subdivisions for 10, 10 lots or more. And and then, but there was one comment that was Commissioner Westerbeck wanted to hear more from Arch about their analysis and any thoughts that they had about keeping it at five units. And I know there has been an exchange there. So I'd like to give Mike Stanger a chance to weigh in on that. And along with that is the second part of the question is, should the increase in the threshold applied to affordable housing requirements citywide or just to these middle housing amendments? So not to put you on the spot, Mike, but I did want to give you a chance to weigh in if you if you'd like to. Otherwise, we can go directly to Commissioner comments.
So we're not seeing anything from Mike at this point? All right, well, let's commissioners. Comments on the two questions? Increasing five to 10? Commissioner Dodd and then Commissioner Westerbeck?
Thanks, Chair. Amanda Dodd here. I would say yes to increasing from five to 10 and also yes to all new subdivisions. That's that's my first thought. I think it makes sense for the reason staff has outlined. And I won't talk forever on it like normal, so Carrie can go next.
Let me clarify that the second part of the question wasn't to extend it to all new subdivisions, but to extend it to all of our current affordable housing requirements citywide. So downtown and in Canyon Park, right now, the threshold throughout is five, yeah, so.
Yes, sorry, yes to that. My apologies, over excited.
I'll try to keep it brief as well.
Mr. Westerbeck, sure.
Thank you. I knew I was next, so I hope you don't mind, Chair. I jumped right in. I concur with Commissioner Dodd. I'll give a little bit of background to the 10 units. Mike Stanger and I have been emailing a little bit. And because I end up doing these feasibility studies for people doing incremental and infill projects, we had some email exchanges about whether rentals were were penciling out or not. And I I won't assume he agrees, but looking at the math right now, developers of every size from those who develop duplexes up to 300 unit are having a trouble doing for rent projects, making them literally pay for themselves, never mind making a profit. So that was, I believe, the master builder's letter. The 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 drive between behind the letter we received from the last meetings in June, I believe. And my my idea when I'm my thoughts behind it, when I'm pushing for 10 instead of five, affordable units are great, but you kind of have to get to a certain critical mass or a critical number of units before you can spread that subsidy across the other nine units. And so then it starts to work when you get to about 10. And I've talked to other architects and developers about that as well. Some of you have even told me that that it doesn't start to work till you get to about 20. So 10, 10 seems reasonable to match the subdivision numbers as well. And so a little bit of background on that, I support that across the city as well.
All right, thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. So to clarify, any new development that is being built within the affordable housing overlay zones would be required to create this affordable housing, whether or not it is midsting middle or single family housing, depending on, of course, the number of units that the developer creates?
Yes, if we if the recommendation is to apply the this new threshold throughout our affordable housing.
Right.
Wherever we have affordable housing requirements, it would apply to apartment buildings and in the general downtown corridor, affordable housing overlay. It would apply to town home developments in the downtown transition or for apartments in the downtown transition, affordable housing overlay that are over that threshold.
And then, thank you. To follow up on Mr. Donahue's question about homeownership, do we expect that if we require this, some of those units that are supposed to be affordable would be homeownership, or does it all depend on the developer?
It it depends on the developer. They have the option of doing ownership housing or rental housing.
Okay.
Ownership housing typically the the affordability requirement is a bit higher. So 80% of area median income for ownership housing and 60% for rental housing. And that's based on kind of the formulas that the Arch has has developed for for, you know, looking at what the what the benefit for whatever the increased capacity is, whether it's a reduced parking or increased height or or density and and how that pencils out for a developer and splitting the benefit between the developer and the terms in form of increased units or reduced costs and the city in the in the form of affordable housing.
Okay, we had a message flash from Mike that he keeps losing his connection. At least one of our commissioners has had more success calling in. So Mike, if you can hear us, you might want to try to use the phone number and call in if you'd like to give us some input. So other commissioners on our two questions, increasing from five to 10 and having the requirement be citywide for affordable housing? Not seeing any, so would you indicate?
Commissioner Robson has her hand up.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you, Commissioner Robson. It's challenging looking in all directions.
I understand. I just wanted to voice my support for raising it to 10 as well and making it applicable to throughout the new, throughout all the all zones or areas. I think the reasoning of the other commissioners is pretty sound in a lot of the arguments we had at last meeting. Also, we're very strongly in favor of having the 10 as opposed to five units. So I just wanted to express my support for that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kurd?
Thanks, this is Karsten. I will echo what's been previously said and further more say that I wouldn't support this this these code amendments if they didn't apply all throughout the city. We don't want to focus growth in one specific area. That's a lot of the concern that our constituents have. When we apply it over the entire city, it spreads the burden so that no individual neighborhood has to accommodate that growth. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurd. Others? Mr. Anders, any comment?
I support I support the the changes and everything that everyone says. So I didn't want to add my voice just to be adding it, but I do support.
All right, thanks. I want to be sure Dave gets his feedback. So so, Dave, I think you heard a consensus among the commissioners in favor of both questions?
That's exactly what I what we needed. So I'm going to share again so I can go to the next question. Okay, and this is one of the folks that testified earlier spoke to this is we're proposing some changes to our lot size averaging regulations that would in it was partly promoted by the Justin Bofard's situation, where he has a a lot that's big enough to subdivide, but our current rules wouldn't allow it without basically demolishing the existing house because of the way it sits on the lot. And so these lot size reduction provisions would allow him to subdivide his lot. And he's very he's interested in doing middle housing on that back lot, but he doesn't necessarily want to be restricted to that. So the basic question is, is should should these this lot size averaging only apply as an incentive for middle housing? Or should that should it apply regardless of whether middle housing was done? And as he was speaking, I thought of one, I'm just going to throw out one idea that popped into my head. We have one of our development review planner who, for years, has been pushing us to consider requiring single family homeowners to to build new single family homes to be ABU ready. So basically to be plumbed and wired so that you could convert it to an ADU very easily. It's not just plumbing and wiring, it's also fire separations and other things. So if you if you didn't want to just restrict it to middle housing and allow lot size reduction proposals to apply to any single family lot, maybe that would be a way to try out that that requirement and require those single family homes to be ADU ready. And we'd want to study that a little bit more before actually putting it in into code language. But be interested to see if there would be support for that or just either allowing it out for any single family lot or only for middle housing.
All right, so the question for feedback from the commissioners is lot size housing or lot size averaging for all housing or just for affordable housing? And I see Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Chair. I Dave got me with what he said, so I find that really intriguing. I also would say one thing that I've been thinking about as we talk about making sure that no part of the city is is targeted with regulations. Also comes no part of the city being excluded. So one thing I would be really interested in learning more about, especially with the delay in this, is can we make sure that HOAs cannot prevent homeowners from from having an ADU if they feel that one is required where they are? I read some I read some interesting analysis around that when HB 1782 was still alive. But I wonder if that's something we as a city can take on and say, you know, you can't prevent it, you know, here for the whole neighborhood, you know, it's up to the homeowner sort of thing. So that's, that's a thought that I had that was sort of just tangented from what you said, Dave. But I like that idea a lot, honestly. The lot averaging, I don't think it needs to be restricted to missing middle housing. I think there's a lot of circumstances where that could help folks even just increase the number of houses, even if it's not technically missing middle. So I would say I support it barring any crazy evidence that it's a bad idea. It doesn't seem bad to me, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dodd. Other commissioners?
And I can respond in part to the question about HOAs prohibiting. We have, I have had a conversation with our deputy city attorney about whether we could absent any state legislation restrict new HOAs from prohibiting middle housing. And he said, yes, we can't make that retroactive if there are existing restrictions, we can't touch those. But we didn't specifically talk about A D Us and I believe I have seen something in the literature about somewhat different approach or a different tact with A D Us. But we'd have, I'd have to look into that further unless Ashley or Sierra know about that.
Okay, thanks, Dave. So other commissioners on this question? Commissioner Augustin.
Sarah Augustin here. To clarify, the question seems to be whether we should allow the reduced setbacks for any type of housing, not just missing middle housing. Do I have that question right before I jump in?
This particular question is just about the lot size averaging.
Okay, the lot size averaging rule, okay.
And whether they should apply not just to affordable housing, but whether they should just apply as a incentive for middle housing or whether they should apply, you know, to any single family lot, whether it's single family for single family construction or middle housing.
Okay, so this, as you were saying, it could potentially result in more single families homes being built if the developer is very creative with how the land is laid out. Is that, is that the consequence potentially here?
Yeah, and there isn't a lot of creativity. It's just, it's really a numbers game.
Okay.
Just allowing a little more flexibility in our, in our lot sizes.
Okay, thank you.
So commissioners, questions on that? Or do we want to weigh in? Not seeing any questions. So Commissioner Westerbeck.
You mean a question about the last comment or are we still speaking to this particular question?
Well, we're speaking to this question, whether people have any clarifying questions or whether we just want to weigh in in favor of it being everywhere or limited.
I'll keep my comments brief then. I'm for the lot averaging citywide for clarity and simplicity. And being an architect for 20 years, I see so many weird lots created all the last, you know, 100 years plus sometimes. And they've been, you know, lot averaging seems like it's been going on for a long time. So there's almost never a lot, you know, that's exactly the size that the, that the zone says. When we do see one that's exactly 96 or 84 or something, I actually kind of marvel because it's usually some odd number above or below. So it just makes a lot of sense. And we have a lot of hills and trees and creeks and wetlands and everything. So, yeah, this just makes a ton of sense to, and it makes the best use of our super precious land. Once again, as Mr. Furey mentioned, you know, it's the best IPO in the world, this land. And we need to use it and husband it and, you know, resource, be resource wise in how we use it. And lot size averaging is really smart. And the HOA, just a suggestion that could be picked up by staff later. You know, maybe the future HOA code or our municipal code says the HOAs can't prevent anything that's legally allowed in our land use code. So if A D Us are allowed, duplexes, et cetera, they can't prevent those from being going into their neighborhood if it's allowed within the city legally. Just a suggestion.
So a suggestion for another day. All right, I'll just then try to get a sense of the commission. So let me ask all in favor of having the lot size averaging citywide?
And can I just clarify, the question isn't really whether to allow it citywide, it's whether to use it, allow it for, limit it to limited to middle housing or, or not.
Okay, so commissioners in favor of not limited? Let's see, three on Zoom. Yes, so I think, Dave, you got a strong consensus there not to limit the use of lot size averaging and allow that.
Yes, thank you. Move on to the next question. Middle housing density, oh, we don't have a question here. That's just initial. Trying to think if I, if I do have any questions for you on this one. Not thinking of anything. And the same with accessory dwelling units. So I guess I would just ask commissioners if they have any questions or suggestions of anything different than what we've written into the code to date to go ahead and chime in. Commissioner Robson?
All right, so I see Commissioner Augustin, are you thinking?
I think I'll go after Commissioner Robson if she's.
All right, Commissioner Robson, I'll see Commissioner Dodd and then Commissioner Augustin. So Commissioner Robson.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the additional parking space with regards to our first public comment. Regardless of the parking available on the property, they need to put in an additional parking space for every A D U unless they have street parking. Is that, is that the case? Am I understanding that regulation correctly?
The, the current code requires one additional off-street space, one beyond what would be required for the single family home for A D Us. So our requirement for single family homes currently is three. There may be situations where an older single family home, if they could demonstrate that the requirement was less than three and when that was built, then they could just add one to it. And most, well, many single family homes in Bothell have two-car garages with two parking spaces on the apron of the garage. So they already have four parking spaces. Now, if they convert the garage to an A D U, that, that's the situation that Mr. Befard is looking at in his home and, and and he doesn't quite have in the driveway room for, for, for cars. At least it sounded like he was a little bit short. So that's one part of the, what we're grappling with and another one is allowing the waiver of the parking requirement near transit trails, but adding a condition that we would allow that waiver if there was on-street parking available. So I would be interested in whether there was support for that. And that came out of comments at the last hearing about neighborhoods that just don't have any on-street parking available.
So the waiver for allowing the use of on-street parking would only apply within the distance of trails or transit?
Yeah, where we're exempting that off-street parking requirement.
Okay. So Commissioner Dodd, then Commissioner Augustin. And, yes.
Chair, I guess my, my question is, let's say a homeowner has a duplex, has the room for two A D Us and the room to make the parking if they need it. Why not let them have the two A D Us that a single family residence could have? I guess I'm not sure if I understand what the downsides are to that. Otherwise, I mean, I like all of it. I just, I noticed that it was different for a duplex and I wondered why.
So I believe, I believe the way the code.
This is Tony. I have a question. If you could just repeat it. I think I'm cutting out or someone else might be, but I missed part of that, Amanda.
Oh, yeah, totally. So my question on the slide, it said that for a single family residence, you could have up to two A D Us. For a duplex, you could have one. And my question is, since we have these requirements around parking and spacing and setbacks and everything, if all that is laid out, if there's enough room on the lot, even with a duplex for two A D Us, I would say let them have two A D Us if they want it. So my question is, what's the downside of that or is like, what's the reason for that difference in the rules?
Good question. I know that the whole notion of allowing a duplex or a town home to have an A D U has been a concern when we've talked about this with the utilities districts. And I'm not sure I can totally articulate their, their concerns, but a big part of their concern is is the ownership. And if, if there's any opportunity that there would be separate ownership, which would require separate meters and also who, you know, who pays the bill and if it's not, if it's on a common meter. But I think there may have been other concerns about allowing more than one A D U for, for other housing types besides single family. That would be something we could look into and bring back in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Augustin.
Sarah Augustin here, and I don't know if Commissioner Anders was raising her hand and we didn't catch that, so.
Ah, okay.
Before we move on.
I was just, I was just having trouble hearing Senior Planner Boyd a little bit. I was missing part of it. I think I could make it out, but you were cutting out on me. I don't know, maybe it's just me.
Okay, well, I'll try to keep an eye out for you.
My, thanks. My question is on page 24 of the packet. The way the current code is drafted, it requires both on-street parking on both sides for the waiver and the half-mile distance from the transit stop. And I don't see why it wouldn't be or, because if you have the frontage and the parking, you meet the requirement, there's the parking there. And if you are in half a mile walking distance ideally, you would meet the requirement and ideally not have to have that extra parking. So it seems to me like or might be a better solution, especially if we firm up the walking distance.
Thank you, Commissioner Augustin. Other comments? Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I'll weigh in quickly. First of all, I just think that we don't need to require parking at all. Let, let the owner sort it out. In reading about this, I read a lot of stuff about A D Us because of my work largely. The two biggest roadblocks in other cities have been owner occupancy and required parking. As soon as cities get rid of that, the floodgates open and they start to actually see 10, 20, 30, 40, 40 full, you know, thousands more A D Us be built, which is what they usually want to do when they pass these ordinances. So they've been huge roadblocks. The fact is, almost every single family home in Bothell has a lot of parking already. As Senior Planner Boyd mentioned, it's usually two in the garage, two on the apron. Our, our right of ways are huge. I don't know if I've ever been to someone's house or to a party or something like that where you, you couldn't find a place to park. It's, it's almost absurd to think there's not a place to park in Bothell when you want to go anywhere here. Even downtown, we come for, when we did live here years ago, we came for Halloween, Halloween and 4th of July, we always found a place to park even in downtown within a few blocks. So our suburbs in the Bothell have plenty of parking. Let's let people decide on their own. People like Justin should be allowed to help us with our housing problem for no cost to us at all. He wants to build housing to help people. Sure, he'll make some money, whatever, but it's a huge risk and we want people to do it, which is why we're doing these code changes. So let's just get out of the way. Keep it simple, delete that part, let it be zero. We also have this assumption that everybody drives a car. I mean, 25% of the population doesn't drive at all because of age, disability, whatever. And then among the people who are of driving age and ability, we're seeing a, a, a big drop in the number of people who decide to get driver's licenses. And, and on top of all that, have, has everyone been seeing the heat wave? Not the ones we had, the heat dome last year, but England and Europe and climate change is, you know, wreaking havoc all over the world. Every time we drive our car, we're contributing to that. And I've got cars, so I'm not, you know, pure here. But let's just keep that in mind. Let's just make it optional. Thanks.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Kurd.
Thanks, this is Karsten. I would tend to concur with Commissioner Westerbeck. One of the, I guess, good outcomes of having what is somewhat of a tragic, tragically high parking requirements in the city for the last 60 years has been that we have the space for parking already. That space has been reserved. I finally completed my research of every single jurisdiction in the state of Washington. Bothell has the highest parking code in the entire state of Washington, matched only by the city of Mercer Island, who actually surprisingly has made a couple of further exceptions to their parking mandates than Bothell has. This is an area that we have historically been very, we have regulated extremely and it hasn't produced overjoyment on the behalf of our, our neighbors and ourselves on what appears to be issues with spillover parking, that sort of thing. And so I don't think that regulating it extremely and requiring it a lot is going to be a good thing for our future either. So let's learn from the mistakes that we've made in 1960 and go forward knowing that this is something that we can amend in the future as well. If it turns out to be an issue or if it turns out that we need to have more public regulation on parking.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurd. Commissioner Anders.
I certainly have not done as much research as Commissioner Kurd has.
None of us have.
This is not necessarily a popular opinion, but I do think we should require some parking, institute some parking requirement for the reasons that I said a couple of meetings ago. I know that, you know, it sounds like a lot of neighborhoods don't have problems, but I know that some do. And I know that some residents, including myself, are concerned about the parking. And I think it's difficult to claw anything back if we don't regulate and we find out that there's a problem down the road. I think once you give someone something, it's always difficult to take it back. So I think it's, it's wise to maybe take a conservative approach, but some kind of approach to a parking requirement. And I haven't given a lot of thought at this point to what might be a reasonable middle ground. But I don't think we should get rid of a parking requirement altogether.
Thank you, Commissioner Anders. So I've heard the proposal that we have, which requires parking. I've heard Commissioner Augustin suggest rather than the and, on-street parking and access to the trail, make it an or. So if there's on-street parking available, that would suffice. And then I've heard commissioners say no parking requirements at all. Any, any thoughts on that? I'm not sure we have a consensus. Commissioner Dodd?
I apologize if there's any background noise. As I said, I'm traveling with my family right now. So I would just say, I think my concern in regulating the parking is we're not going to account for every situation, right? Like Mr. Befard had a great example of where there's street parking readily available where he is. but he would still have to add more. So I think, I, I like the idea of not regulating it and making, I mean, developers are going to build where they're going to make money, right? If there's no street parking and no parking, people aren't going to use it. So, and they're not going to buy it or rent it. So I, I, I do lean that way. I'm still interested in hearing what everyone has to say though.
Okay, other comments? So Dave, you don't have a clear direction?
No, but I, I think this is something we can take a closer look at based on the feedback we've gotten and, and come back with some, perhaps some options to lay it out and, and maybe do a straw poll when we have some clear options that we can, can present. And I was about to say that it kind of feels like we're straying into the next hearing. We will be talking about, more about parking in the next item on, on the agenda.
Well, we do like to talk about parking, so. I, I like the suggestion for the or myself, where there is clearly on-street parking available. Allow that to be utilized, but we'll wait for you to come back to us on this one. Do you have any other questions for the Feedback Commission on this item?
No, that was it. Those last two were just informational and so I guess our recommendation would be to continue the public hearing to a date uncertain and, and we will endeavor to bring it back as, as soon as possible. Right now, our September calendar is looking pretty packed. So I think it's unlikely that we've come back earlier than October, but we try to, we don't want to let this lie dormant too long and then, and then have to revisit it after a long delay.
Okay, so there is some urgency on this. Is there a motion to continue the hearing to the date uncertain? Well, is there? Commissioner Robson, there you go.
Motion to continue at a later date.
Is there a second? Commissioner Anders, I see your hand.
I second the motion to continue to a later date.
Is there any discussion around that motion? Commissioner Westerbeck, then Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you. I don't think I got a chance to mention my proposal because we're at the end of the, the hearing. We all, well, I don't know if we all. City Spokane two days ago made some, for somewhat historic missing middle code changes. And they put in place a one-year pilot program. And it's made a lot of news. And I would propose, we have the momentum right now. We were planning on bringing this to council. It's almost done. We have a housing emergency. It's a house on fire, a hair-on-fire housing emergency. I would propose that we continue this by doing a, putting this into a one-year proposal, a one-year pilot program while doing all the work. I love the equity work, the grant, it's such a, it's a total score. I would love to see all that research done. But another year of waiting to, I mean, it takes a year to design and entitle the fastest, smallest project. Bigger projects take two to five years. We just don't have time to wait. And we all have, I'll have this almost done. It's not that hard for us to go back and tweak things when we get more feedback. Oh, this is a bad idea, this needs to be tweaked, whatever, we could do that in spring. So let's be like Spokane. They're, they've become leaders. Let's do a one-year pilot and get this, get this going. Momentum is hard to take it going again.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I tend to agree with Commissioner Westerbeck on the urgency, at least on the parking issue. I think we need to hash it out and get an answer because at least some of this needs to start moving forward. And I could be convinced otherwise, but I think we should at least discuss whether we're going to push it aside for another few months.
All right, well, there is motion on the table and seconded, and this is a time for discussion. So we've heard two commissioners weigh in in interest of moving forward more rapidly. Other commissioners? Commissioner Kerd.
Thanks, this is Carson. I agree with my fellow commissioners who are interested with pushing it forward faster. I think that I'm going to vote no on this. And I would support having a, a term on the motion. I don't like to leave things open-ended to a time uncertain. I think that maybe we could select the first or second meeting in September. Instead, just to put some bookends on it. Thanks.
So that would require a motion, an amendment to the motion. Do I hear a motion to amend the motion?
I would move to.
I can make, weigh in.
Go ahead, Dave.
The September, like I said, the September calendar is, is full. So if you wanted to continue to a date certain, I would say the earliest date would be October 5th. And the, the reason we're suggesting a date uncertain is because we, we need to, I mean, we're dealing with staffing changes and shortages and, and and other factors that have really made it hard to, to move forward on some of these things. We're pushing as hard as we can. And we have no interest in delaying this longer than we have to. But we, we, we need a little bit of time to, to consider this new grant and, and how, how we might move forward. And we can look at, at a pilot program approach, going with what we've got now ahead of that work and, and bring it back. And, and I think in any case, we, I would hope to bring it back in October. But so, but September really is back solid. And I think we'll see that a bit later in the, in the meeting.
I can add to, to Dave's suggestion. I think one of the things that we can do in the next two months too is talk to our legal team about what interim ordinance would look like. And that might give us some opportunity too, that in October, we, if we do decide to move forward with something like a one-year pilot or an interim ordinance, that we've done the legal work on it so that that could be done sooner than, than having more conversation about it and then not being able to move forward. So that's one suggestion and something I think we could do in the next two months. And then we can also bring you all, send you all that grant proposal. And then maybe kind of figure out a, a work plan to finish this piece of the, the, the first grant to give some security as to, you know, we don't want to let this languish. And there's just been some things outside of our control too with staffing, like, like Planner Boyd said, that has caused some complication on getting this completely finished. So I think we could, we could talk to our legal team, get you all a copy of that grant, and then come up with a proposal to get this to council.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor to continue to a date uncertain. There's been a lot of discussion around the sense of urgency. Is there a motion to amend the motion to add a certain date with an expression of our intent to move as rapidly as possible?
I would amend the motion to, make a movement to amend the motion to set a date, preferably within October, recognizing staff's difficulties to continue the public hearing on middle housing.
Okay, so there is a, a motion to amend, is there a second? Commissioner Kerd.
I second the motion.
Okay, so it is moved and seconded that we amend the motion to continue the hearing to, to October with a recommendation, we continue some interim actions to make these changes effective as soon as possible. Set a fair summary of your motion?
Sufficient for me.
All right, so all in favor? So Dave, do you have that motion clear enough?
I do. I, I guess I would just say that if it's, it's either a date certain or it's not a date certain. So unless Deputy Director Winchell thinks we should push it to the, the third Wednesday in October, I would recommend that we could bring something back to you on October 4th and try to, try to have something that we can, that the commission can forward to council with the recommendation.
I think clearly the interest of the commission is sooner rather than later. Commissioner Anders?
I just have a clarifying question. If we're moving it to a date certain, are we picking the date tonight? I got confused in all the, the date talk. Are we moving it to a certain date and we're going to name that date tonight? Or are we going to come back with the date?
I think Dave just suggested the date October 1st.
Oh, okay.
If we move to a, continue to a date certain, we have to include the date.
Got it.
And, and you're suggesting October 1st is feasible?
October 5th is the first.
Okay, I didn't have my calendar up yet. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we defer the, extend the hearing to October 5th with a recommendation that include discussion of an interim action to allow quicker effectiveness. All in favor of that motion? All right, I see unanimous on that. So Dave, does that get you what you need on this hearing?
I believe so.
So with that, we'll continue this hearing until October 5th and look forward to further discussion.
Thank you.
All right, that was the quick one, huh? So our next item. Is there an interest in taking a quick break?
Sure.
I heard a, yes, so I see enthusiastic, yes. So let's take 10 minutes and come back and we will open the public hearing on parking reductions near frequent transit. So I see 7:44, let's come back in 10. Thanks.
Senior Planner Boyd, do you have some something to share with us on this? I do, and I should probably know better by now, but I'm also hoping that this one will be relatively quick. Partly because since the in the packet, I was I said that I was hopeful that we'd be able to get to a recommendation tonight, but we do need to do some additional work on the affordable housing requirements associated with this. So I don't think it'll need an extensive extensive continuation. And you could close the hearing and just continue deliberations, but I am going to be requiring recommending continuation on this one as well. Sorry about that. Also, Mike Stanger is has been following us on his phone, so hopefully he'll be able to join in through that way. So I'm going to start off with some some slides that are repeats from before, just in case there's anyone following along, I'll go through these quickly. It started with expanding provisions for reduced parking that were passed in 2019, particularly for market rate housing more than a quarter mile as the state mandated at less than a half mile from frequent transit for the state's requirements. And then as we got into it, the there was interest in conditioning additional reductions with parking study and and considering affordable housing provisions. So the previous map showed the quarter and a half mile radii around the stops that meet the state requirement for frequent transit, and then this shows the stops that report that qualify for the areas that qualify for parking reductions under our previous 90s era transit reductions. So the and those only extend to an eighth of a mile, which is the darker circle. But we added quarter and a half mile radii to those as well. And also part of the background is that we with downtown and Ken Canyon Park plans, we instituted parking reductions already based on their transit surface. And so those are already in Canyon Park, those those were factored into the affordable housing requirements. And then we've heard from from the commission that they would like to apply these parking reductions, not just to existing, but to future transit, including areas where we would like would hope to get better transit in the future. Unfortunately, those areas that are neighborhood activity centers already do have bus service, so they qualify for the existing parking reductions, and our proposal is to expand on those existing reductions with incremental reductions, they go back to the 90s era code, and those are shown on the green circles here. So with that. Oh, so the blue markers are are some of those activity centers, the green marker there is where the swift green line stop would likely be when it when we do the both away improvements and they can extend down to downtown and the campus. So the changes in the packet are not there are major changes in the findings. There was a recommendation last time that we that the finding that promotes parking management strategy that that be changed to transportation management, not just parking, including what's described in the downtown suburb area plan for parking management plan and transportation demand management Canyon Park. So that's been added and as well as there was suggested to add to the recommendation that that the city expand tools, consider expanding tools like the King County Right Size Parking Calculator that they not only consider expanding it, but fund that work. So those have been added to the proposed findings. The proposed amendments, we introduced last time this the tiered system with one level of parking reductions that are are by right or that are already allowed in the code, and then deeper reductions is justified by a parking study with affordable housing requirements. So at the last hearing, at least three commissioners can supported and and last time around, we provided two options, one where that third tier would still have a minimum parking requirement, but there was at least three commissioners that wanted to have no flow there floor there and 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 to have the parking requirement based on the parking study and then a variable affordability requirement that would be calculated on a project by project basis. So I did have had a conversation with Mike Stanger at Arch. He thinks that is is doable as long as we as long as we have a very clear description of how that would be calculated in the code and then but not actually codify the 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 exact formula, but authorize the director to use apply certain criteria and then that criteria could be included in an administrative order or or for implementation. And then on affordability requirements. There there would be the the variable requirement requirement, but as the memo identified, the it include the memo included a table with some draft affordability levels, but it noted that they didn't include the shared benefit analysis and would need to be modified and and we're still, I'm afraid we're still not ready with a final proposal for you to include in a recommendation. So once again, we are recommending a motion to continue the hearing to September 21st. We don't think it will need that will need a lot of time then. I think we're very close. So with that, I opened it up for clarifying questions and comments in a public testimony. I haven't received any requests for public testimony on this item and then deliberations in any direction to staff. And then a motion to continue the hearing to September 21st.
And we don't have anyone in the room any longer, so there'll be no public testimony from here.
Oh, I do have one new attendee who has commented on the 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 affordable, I mean, the middle housing amendments, but I will ask, well, first of all, let's do clarifying questions and I'll then ask if he wants to testify.
Commissioner Westerback?
Thank you. Dave, I'm going to jump back in the packet a little bit. I was reading through the other day and on page 32, there's a table, I'm not sure if it's actually part of the code, it the parking reduction stalls per unit. Do you know the table? It says it's kind of a flow chart. Will the project provide affordable housing through land use regulations? And it says point every point oh five. Is that supposed to be point five or am I just reading it's a really small increment?
No, it is point oh five, so for example, so the reduction would be from, for example, from 80% of area median income to 75% of area median income.
Oh, okay. Well, it says parking reduction stalls per unit. So it's actually point oh five relates to the AMI.
I'm sorry. Mike Stanger, if you're able to join us and this was a table, he provided his initial analysis that he wants to refine further before we actually codify it.
Okay, I just was like, you know, I'm used to seeing parking reductions, you know, at a half or point three quarters or something like that. So point oh five is so little, I thought there might be that might be a typo. I don't know. I don't want to suggest someone messed up.
No, 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 and I'm sorry, I led you wrong. So it is based on stalls per unit. So if the if the base requirement is point seven five stalls per bedroom or per unit, then the incremental reduction would be based on would be go first to point seven oh and then point six five and point.
Oh, so it is. Okay, got it. So it actually got it. Okay. All right. I think our parking code and all throughout the code could be so much simpler, but I do this really, I, you know, calculate parking for part of my job, and this has been really hard to decipher this whole section and all the all the the if this, then this and percentages changes, and if you do this much affordable housing, I I don't know, I think it would be, there's already so much bloat, like when we go permit a project, it takes an enormous amount of time and we, you know, we need more consultants and and fee and everything than ever, and it takes you guys longer to review it understandably. So I don't know. I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in this, but man, we could sure simplify this and make it a lot easier to decipher. It feels like you should be able to jump in the code, look at a table, say, you know, here's a few exceptions, you can get, you know, some simple chop offs of reductions of parking if you if you put in some affordable housing and that's really easy to understand and we just keep it keep it simple. And I don't actually have a super thought through suggestion right now because I was just trying to understand it at first, but I always be willing to brainstorm what would be more understandable. But I understand a lot of it works been done. I don't want to just throw it in the recycling bin, but those are my comments of the moment.
And we can certainly look at how we can simplify. First, the simpler method of the options would be to set a floor, but we did hear that you wanted more flexibility.
I mean, you.
And of course, it would be much simpler if we didn't regulate parking at all.
Yeah, you know, I'm going to go there because I feel like, man, we need we need housing, period, but we really need affordable housing. We should just say it's optional. Go build some housing. Go get her done. Like, we're not going to, we're not going to hinder you anymore. A lot of people who are in, you know, lower lower AMI housing don't even drive. They can't afford a car. So I don't know. I'm like a broken record on that, I know. Thank you.
Okay, other commissioner feedback, clarifying questions? Dave, you had that one point where there was an option. Could you go back to that so we can discuss it?
So there were actually in the draft code, there were three, well, two sections that offered this option of variable parking requirement based on the parking study, which then implies or variable affordability requirement. There. And I don't actually have it, maybe I should share the. So it would apply to reductions beyond the 660 feet for stops that qualify for for that those reductions. It would apply to market rate housing in that half to or quarter to half mile radius. And it would also likely apply to in one other category, if that's the direction that that the commission wants to go to where 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 the draft includes a floor of point seven five spaces for for studios and one bedrooms, 1.25 for two bedroom units and 1.5 for three bedrooms and above.
So would those two options remain in the code or are those options you're asking for feedback on?
Those are options I'm asking for feedback on and basically and and the feedback last time. Those are options I'm asking for feedback on and basically, and the feedback last time, I know that at least three commissioners weighed in on option two. And and that's why we we start started the work in that direction that was in the memo, the table that was in the memo.
So any further feedback for Dave on those options?
Let me check in with our, I'm going to promote Mac to a panelist to see if if he does want to testify. Matt Carter, if you can hear me, can you just mute your mic and let us know if you wanted to testify on this item?
Oh, well, on parking in general, I basically can say that I'm really against street parking. Kind of overall, I do find the councilman's comment about if you're poor, you don't have a car kind of comical because when I was poor, I had two because I had to make certain that I had one that ran and got me to work. So it's not that you have one car per person and that you have two cars per person. If you don't have the money to go and afford to go and to be living in a house. So there's all sorts of things on that. So, you know, when it comes to the the parking of vehicles, like I've mentioned to you before previously, Dave, I would go and I'd make it so it's required to be on property somewhere where it's, you know, kept safe and out of the public eye. Oh, and then if I could also add, the other thing is, is that I also do believe that as a person who goes and uses public spaces, I would like to go and be able to take my family, buy my car to those public spaces and not have to be blocked off from trails and parks and things like that. Because someone is, you know, housing their car or vehicle in that space as a permanent resident. So that's basically it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. So you didn't have anyone else, Dave?
No.
All right. So commissioners, questions, comments? So Dave, your proposal is that we continue this and you come back in September?
September twenty first.
September twenty first. Well, if there is no further discussion on this matter, is there a motion to continue to September twenty first? Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you. I move to continue the public hearing to September twenty first.
Is there a second commissioner occurred?
A second the motion?
Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of continuing this public hearing to September twenty first? All three here raised their hands and all of our remote commissioners raise their hands. So it is unanimous. We'll continue this hearing to September twenty first. So thank you, Dave. We'll continue this one and move on to our next agenda item. And the next agenda item is a study session around the bike plan. Is Sherman gonna lead this?
Well, I let him know that we were getting, oh, there he is. Let me promote him to the panelist. I also promoted Steve Morikawa to a panelist. I tried anyway. Okay, got Sherman. And so Sherman, if you want to go ahead and unmute and and the floor is yours to present the bike bike plan discussion.
All right. So we have transportation planner Sherman Gong to lead us through a study session on the Bofal Bike Plan.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, let's see. I guess we'll just.
I just made you a co-host. Make sure that you can share your presentation.
Okay, I'm hearing an echo and all that. Is that problematic?
I'm not hearing it.
Okay.
And you sound pretty good in chambers here, so let's just proceed.
Okay, great. Share screen. Let me hang on here. Yeah. Okay.
I'm seeing your screen in presentation mode with your.
Oh, how do we do that?
Try under maybe display settings. Upper left.
Oh, here. This like that?
Sorry.
Okay, we're seeing preview of the next slide. Current slide and next slide previewed.
Check the the pull down menu under display settings in the upper left.
Here. Swap. Okay. Okay. All right. Well, good evening, commissioners. My name is Sherman Gong. I'm the city transportation planner and with me is Steve Morikawa, the capital division manager. And we do have a lot of information that we would like to share with you tonight. So just to get started, since we only have forty five minutes to start our study session for the Bofal Bike Plan. We don't have enough time tonight to share everything with you, so we are returning. We are scheduling to return on September seventh for a two hour session to continue this with you guys and we are planning to attend the September twenty first meeting for up to two hours for further discussion if necessary, and we'll schedule time for that as well. The goals for this initial meeting and the two subsequent meetings in September are basically the following. We want to share what we heard from the public and the stakeholder input. When it come to a shared vision for the bike plan, because it would just be great if we could be all be on the same page moving forward. And we want to get your input on how to implement the plan. And then have a discussion about the standard details that we want to adopt to build the bike facilities. Tonight, we hope to get through the public input and vision portions of the bike plan first. So first, let me outline what our outreach, public outreach included. We had three public workshops which reached about sixty participants. We've had a social media blast to city Facebook and Twitter accounts along with postings to the city webpage, website and e-news venues. The social media links reached over eleven thousand people with about a hundred and thirty actually clicking on to view the bike information. The webpage reached about five hundred and sixty visitors and included an online survey, which was responded to by about twelve of the visitors and asked the following questions. What would it take for you to become a more frequent bike user in Bothell? Where in Bothell can't you bike because there's no safe way to get there? And then did you have any comments or questions about the bike plan? In addition to the internet and web web services we had, we also did personal interviews with fifteen stakeholders with adjacent counties and cities, Pigeon Sound Regional Council and a couple of transportation coalitions, educational institutions, North Shore School District and U Dub Bothell Cascadia. And a few bike interest groups, including like Cascade Bike and Bikes of Snohomish County. And with the help of our public outreach consultant, P R R, we also conducted interviews with three community based organizations, including Bothell for People Oriented Places, North Shore Senior Center and Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. So summary, what we heard from the majority of public and stakeholder feedback were basically three primary comments. Most want a network for all users, which meant a protected bike lane system separated from traffic for the entire corridor. We also heard that the timing and implementation of the bike plan projects is not aggressive enough and needs to happen a little soon. And finally, no additional network links were identified with the exception of making Valley View Road from U Dub Bothell Cascadia Campus to downtown, a neighborhood greenway. And that designated bike routes through downtown need to be identified. However, in addition to those primary comments, we also heard feedback for providing better connections to neighborhoods in neighborhoods and to trails, not to leave gaps in the system. In other words, don't build a section here and there, just try to build a continuous. Improve crossings over I four oh five, that includes I nine, the one hundred ninety fifth interchange as well as five twenty seven. Consider traffic calming to slow down vehicle traffic. Use of traffic calming measures and neighborhoods and such. And the need for education enforcement, wayfinding, bike storage and maintenance. So that covers the public input that we received to date. So keeping this in mind as we move into the vision discussion, I want to pause right now just to answer any questions you may have before we continue the presentation.
So commissioners, questions? Looking at the zoom. Don't see any of you and I think you can proceed.
Okay. So what do we see for the vision of the bike plan to be? So the vision is the ultimate network we want to have, not only for now, but for the generations to come. One that is going to be accessible for everyone, safe, comfortable and convenient to get where you want to go. The draft bike plan was developed based on nationally accepted bike facility types and how they correlate to traffic and roadway conditions. The network facilities we propose for the ultimate vision included standard bike lanes, what you mainly see on our existing bike routes today. Buffered bike lanes, which include a two foot buffer stripe between the travel, the vehicle travel way and bike lanes. And then protected or separated bike lanes, which locates the bike lane at sidewalk level between the sidewalk and landscape strip and provides a physical buffer between bikes and and vehicles, although they will not actually stop a car if it jumps the curb. And then finally, shared use paths, which is essentially like a protected bike lane, but does not distinguish the space between bikes and pedestrians. However, based on the public feedback, there is no interest in providing for either standard or buffered bike lanes, mainly because they do not provide any physical buffer from vehicles regardless of the travel speed or traffic volumes, which means that most bike route core bike route corridors will consist of either protected bike lanes or shared use paths, with the exception of the local neighborhood greenway routes. Revisions cover about ninety percent of the changes to the part A vision based on the public feedback. So let's talk about few specific other concerns. So besides the protective bike lanes, we also heard a strong desire for designated routes through downtown Bothell. This figure depicts our recommendation for routing through downtown, which is really the downtown core outlined in the red boxed area only. The streets colored green represents streets with protected bike lane facilities, while the yellow colored streets represent streets that would remain as share-o marked facilities. Converting the share-o marked streets into protected bike lanes would have a significant economic impact to our local businesses, mainly due to the removal of parking, which would be required and which is a premium downtown in the downtown core. And so it's not recommended. Downtown streets are also very narrow, so trying to build bike lanes would likely impact sidewalks and pedestrian accessibility, which is a primary objective for downtown Bothell. So for you, for those of you not familiar, I need a reminder, a share-o is a marking on the road, just like the ones you see here. And it tells cyclists and people driving cars that they must both share the same lane. A consideration, though, we would like to share with you is the use of road dieting to create the space for bike facilities. There's not a lot of opportunities to expand the bike network this way in Bothell. But the two locations of North Creek Parkway and the twenty ninth Drive, Twenty Sixth Avenue corridors come to mind. Twenty ninth, twenty ninth and twenty sixth corridors are in are actually private streets right now and they're in the Canyon Park Business Park. So that will happen when it comes when they become public streets. And the North Creek Parkway obviously is a North Creek Business Park. These corridors offer a wide enough pavement width by eliminating a travel lane to accommodate a bike lane without relocating the curb and possibly using other physical barrier types, not just the landscape strip. So as you can see, picture, the shoulder is very wide and and is, you know, available for parking right now, but with ample off street parking available, you know, and the use of office space these days, that space is probably rarely used for parking and would likely not be missed if it were to be converted to a bike lane. Providing for a protected bike lane only network also has some impacts. One impact of considering only protected bike lanes is the impact to local neighborhood on street parking on residential frontage. These are on the bike route locations. Since existing pavement width is not available to accommodate the added protected bike lane, parking would need to either be removed or property frontage would likely need to be acquired to provide the added width needed. We recommend that this issue be resolved on a case by case survey of any of the communities impacted where there is parking on street and has an identified bike route on it. The other impact has to do with safety. Protected bike lanes put riders behind trees and vegetation, which will block them from the driver's view. This is particularly the issue at driveways and intersections where drivers do not see adjacent bike riders when making the right turn movements. The result of this blind spot, if you will, is sort of like in that upper picture. If you're traveling along and you're ready to make a right turn, you may not see the the bike rider following up adjacent to you. Result of that blind spot is that if you know, is that there are generally a higher number of crash incidents because of that, but they are lower severity than in-street bike lane crashes. Also, engineering guidelines suggest that moving bike lanes closer to the street or the travel lanes at intersections and or driveways and have them clear vegetation to allow for better visibility by both riders and drivers. So as a result of the shift to only including in protected bike lanes within the city, the map of the draft part A ultimate vision on the left we started with. the map of the draft Part A ultimate vision on the left we started with will now look like the network on the right. And you can see all the protected lanes in the purple shade. In summary, the vision will include no on-street bike facilities except for neighborhood greenways. Downtown bike routes are designated, and there's a consideration for road dieting to expand the bike network where we can. And parking impacts will be surveyed on a case-by-case basis. So that concludes our presentation for the time we have tonight. And I'd like to open up the meeting for questions and discussion so that we can get to a consensus or agreement for what Part A vision looks like.
So commissioners, questions? If you unshear your screen, there you go. Do we have questions for Sherman?
Well, I've got one to start with.
Okay, Commissioner Westerback, then Commissioner Robson.
Thank you. This is probably minor, but one of the last slides you showed about the collisions, particularly intersections. I know there's been a lot of, you know, creative engineering around protected bike lanes and integrating bikes into cities. Does tool design, maybe they've already commented on it, the suggestions you had for making those safer? Do they already have some, some ideas in mind for making those intersections safer? So there are fewer collisions where the protected bike lanes, you know, meet corners and intersections? Are they working on that, or you have some ideas on that already?
That's, that was a little diagrams we showed you and some of those suggestions. Yeah, that was, that's pretty much the best way to approach that.
Because I nerd out on that stuff, and I know that I see these diagrams, they're like, oh, here's four options, five options. So it sounds like there are ways to tackle that. Okay.
Yeah, depending on the, you know, the the size of the intersection, let's say, you know, there's also
Number lanes and all that.
Protected bobout scenario where, and I didn't want to get into the details of that, so that's, we could talk about that later.
No problem. I understand. Thank you, Sherman.
Yep. We want to just focus on, if we're all on the same page, same network, with the vision's good, we're all going to move forward, you know?
Commissioner Robson. Mute.
There we go.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm trying to scroll through my packet and also talk on Zoom, so hang on, let me I just noticed on the last slide you have there, and I'm trying to call it up in my packet, which has caused me some issues here. The changes to the first draft of the plan and then the ultimate plan. I noticed that, and then you mentioned in the beginning, that you didn't get a lot of support for any form of bike lane except for protected bike lane, and so you made those adjustments in your draft, which I think is awesome, but I'm also wondering, certainly in your revised draft, it's not as, it doesn't cover as much because of the downtown area, because protected bike lanes take a lot more investment, I would imagine. Knowing, when you phrase the questions to the public, did you, I'm wondering if, considering we could have a bike lane here or nothing at all, you know, if they would go for, oh, I would prefer a mix of protected and more exposed bike lanes and get greater coverage as opposed to less coverage with protected bike lanes. So I think my, ultimately, my question is, how were those questions phrased towards the public? And how did that, how did you reach your decision from your feedback to focus strictly on, to reduce coverage and increase protected bike lanes as opposed to going with your original vision?
So we hadn't, we didn't reduce the coverage at all, we just changed certain facilities that are either were intended to be bike lanes or buffered bike lanes to be protected bike lanes. But the network didn't shrink, it's going to cost more, but that's, that's a discussion for another time. We just want to focus on making sure that at this point in time, we are all in agreement that we can move forward with the vision, which is to have a protected bike lane network, basically on all of our, you know, busier street corridors for them, for, you know, to be general about it.
Thank you.
Okay, other commissioner comments, questions, feedback? Commissioner Kurt.
Thanks, this is Carson. Thank you for listening to the feedback of the commission and the public. I know it seems like it might be impractical or it might, you know, the planning process isn't fully fleshed out, but this is really more aligned with the vision that we were going for, for all ages and abilities to be able to use the facilities and get through our city however they need to. I, so yes, I'm on board. The things that I'd encourage, a little bit of thought, and I know that I'm still working on everything. One is still the connection over four oh five on Bothel Everett Highway. So it's going to be a long, long time until we can build a new pedestrian path and then make it safe for bikes. So in the interim, we do need some sort of protection, and I know that's going to require some careful collaboration with other agencies, external agencies, but it is an incident waiting to happen. I'm surprised we don't have fatalities from that interchange already. Regardless of whether we think people are going to be using the North Creek Trail to get up and down the spine, there are people that ride their bikes and walk over that interchange, so they need to be protected. The other thing is, the city is planning some roundabouts in the future. And this is an opportunity for Bothel to lead on safe pedestrian and bike facilities in roundabouts. Don't look at neighboring jurisdictions, don't look at NACTO, look internationally. This is an opportunity to, I mean, we're planning from the ground up, so use it. Really become familiar with that, and the last and final challenge I would offer would be to get out and bike in our city. I would love to do a lunchtime bike ride if you're ever in Bothel. I would happily take a lunchtime off and, and ride around just so that we can see, you know, what the facilities look like in real life and what the vision is and really get on board with, you know, knowing each other's background and interest in bikes, so I'd encourage that. I'll send you an email, I'll send Public Works an email, and if you'd like to take me up on that, I'd love to do it, so thank you.
Think you'll leave me in the dust, probably, riding around, but just sixty years old.
I'm a pretty slow rider and some other people on this commission would attest.
Could I just ask you a quick question on that, the roundabout design? What particularly in the NACTO or local jurisdictions that you think don't work versus what you think does work?
Yeah, and maybe I can, I can send more information offline and follow up.
Okay.
I would encourage just, instead of bringing pedestrians and bicyclists closer to cars in roundabout design, they should be further apart. There should be physical barriers, it shouldn't just be striping on the road. Shouldn't be color distinctions, doesn't really matter in the long term. It, it might require a little bit more right-of-way to make sure that there's adequate buffer between people not in cars and people in cars, but that extra space can allow more reaction time for drivers to realize that there might be obstacles, so.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thanks Chair, thanks for the presentation, Sherman. I really like the changes that I've seen since the first time this came to us. I'm going to one-up Commissioner Kurt and say you can ride with him in Valley View and then come right to see me on Nike Hill, where we are going to get a roundabout, and I am terrified, that's where I walk and bike to get my kid to school, and I, you know, walking and biking in Woodinville around their roundabouts in wine country off the trail, horrifying, because at the four-way stop that's there now, cars have to stop. At roundabouts, they just keep going, and you're on a bike, and half the time my kid is on the back of my bike, and it's, it's terrifying. I'll own my Harley Davidson e-bike so you can feel cool, and, and let's go, because it's, that roundabout really scares me. So anything we can do to make a safer version in Bothel, if we have to have the roundabout there, would be amazing. So I really appreciate that he brought that up, because I had forgotten, and then I went, and then he said roundabout, and I was like, oh, right, the terrifying roundabout that's going right by my house. So it's, it's a big concern of mine. I know that roundabouts are safer for car accidents, but in my own unprofessional seeking of statistics, it seems like they're a lot more dangerous for bike and ped traffic.
So that, that the roundabouts are great for capacity, you know, that's what the purpose of them are there, to increase traffic flow better than stoplights and stuff, that's kind of the main purpose of why they're basically incorporated, but you know, hopefully we can maybe look at other routes, you know? It's not like we have to route everything through a roundabout, you know, for bikes. There's, ideally, we try to stay away from, you know, major intersections, so to speak, and that's kind of, you know, where those roundabouts generally go, or is where, you know, you have a higher volume of traffic, you're trying to push it through the intersection. So, you know, we could try to look, try to look for alternative routes, you know, that, you know, would offer a more comfortable ride for people, you know, that's, that would be an alternative way to look at it.
Yeah, totally. I think where I'm at, near where second turns into two thirty-first, it's an L-shaped road. My choices are two twenty-eighth or two fortieth or Meridian or Bothel Everett Highway, so they're all busy traffic roads. We don't have a lot of through roads there, so whatever alternative paths you can offer us, I would happily take.
Look, thanks.
All right, other commissioners, Mr. Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thanks, Sherman, for getting us a bigger and better bike plan, sorry, Transportation Planner Gong. And I really like your hand-drawn illustrations, those are awesome. I do have to wonder, I love seeing protected routes in more places. I do have to ask, how much will this change cost compared to the first version? What is the ballpark we're talking about adding? And how much of that do we think City of Bothel will pay for versus grants? And then the next question is time, how much more time will it take us to do this better bike plan?
Yeah, if you're, you know, if you're, if you think the vision is kind of where we're going, is the right way to go, and you're on board with this vision, we can, we're going to be talking about, a lot about the timing and implementation in the next few meetings. From a cost standpoint, yeah, it's going to cost more, it will, because it costs more, it takes more time, because we don't have, you know, you know, oodles of money, bundles of money to spread around, so I can't, I can't tell you how long, you know, or what, you know, what the timing would be right now, but we'll, we'll address some of those kinds of things in our, in our next meetings with you guys, because there's, you know, it's all a function of, you know, of how well projects compete and everything like that. It's, it's a whole nother array, I don't want to get into that right now, so good questions, but I, it would take all night to get into those, to get to answer that question for you, honestly.
Commissioner Westerback.
Thank you, Commissioner Westerback here, thank you, Transportation Planner Gong, this is great. I like, like other commissioners, I love the reiteration of this plan, this, this update, and that we're being more bold and ambitious, because as you've seen and people have expressed, you just don't feel safe unless there's, you know, somewhat protected from being mowed down by a car, and we see that around the world. Anyway, I want to applaud you, this is really great, and big improvement. I'm curious, I know budget's always an issue. We have really pretty big right-of-ways in lots, lots of Bothel streets, and I'm thinking, for example, just as an example right here, between on Beardsley Boulevard, between Uda Bothel Campus and downtown, it's a really huge right-of-way. And granted, there's parking there that gets used and everything, but even with the parking, I wonder if there's room for restriping and then, you know, putting down bolt-down bollards or something like, you know, Jersey Bear or something like that, I see that being done. I know there are transportation planners, and I brought this up before, Jeff Speck, who's well-known for his work around making, but walking and biking around city safer. He recommends the low-hanging fruit when you've got right-of-way is make ten-foot lanes. I know Bothel has twelve mandated in our code, whatever, so we may, may need to look at that. It also makes, you know, fewer traffic fatalities when people are driving slower, because the lane's narrower. And then reuse that, re-envision that right-of-way. It seems like that would be a lot less expensive, and we've got pretty big right-of-ways, especially in places where you might even just leave the sidewalk there, maybe there isn't a sidewalk, but we've got fifty, sixty, maybe seventy-five or even eighty feet of right-of-way. And like in, I live on Ninety-Eighth over here in downtown, and we have a turn lane, and it's virtually never used except for trucks to drop, drop things off. They need a place like the Amazon trucks to park. We have like huge amounts of right-of-way that's kind of unused, because the turn lane isn't really necessary, it's not a busy, busy street that way. So I just can't help, every time I'm riding or driving around Bothel, thinking we could probably repurpose our huge right-of-ways and restripe them. I know striping and paint costs money, I know bollards cost money, but it seems like a first, a first pass. And, you know, quickly, a capital project that maybe would be, you know, a few million or something like, I don't know what the price would be versus millions and millions and needing federal monies or state monies. You could say, all right, we're going to, we're going to repurpose and restripe a right-of-way. And I think a great place to start, for example, I'm shocked, I'm shocked we haven't done it after twenty-three years of having the Uda Bothel Campus there, that we haven't laced together Beardsley and downtown with a protected bike lane in both directions and some Kermit, some green paint. And, I mean, it's an economic and financial opportunity for the city as well to connect the city, the campus to downtown, and that'd be a great pilot project. It's only, you know, half a mile or something like that, right? It's not very far, so, I don't know, just throwing it out there. Our right-of-ways just seem like they're ripe for the picking and for the restriping.
I don't know what the actual pavement width is out there with the parking, and if you want to remove parking or anything like that, but I just, I knew, I do know that buses, which it is, Beardsley is a two-way bus corridor, you know, require, they require minimum of twelve feet, just so that, from mirror to mirror, and they, anything less than that, they would probably not, not go for, so. And that's kind of the issue over on Ninety-Eighth even right now, is that that's meant to be part of the transit corridor as well. They, they actually don't even go one way now, because they don't, they don't have the width to, they're, they're afraid of, you know, having that issue. So that's why there's, you know, in the future, that Sound Transit is going to be working on making adjustments to that corridor, so that it is, they can accommodate two-way buses. I think looking at a pilot program would be cool, that would be something that we could try to look at in the future, but right now, I think if we are, you know, protected bike lanes and, you know, is the direction we're going, and we're going to add that into the plan for Beardsley. I think you see a lot of people, you know, we don't have, I don't think, recall seeing any accidents on Beardsley with bikes, but I do know they also use Valley View, you know, as a back way, as a quiet route into downtown.
I walk it sometimes, and, you know, we could do, we could do a route there, I mean, that could be.
You know, that's, that's, that's the neighborhood greenway that we've
That'd be great.
Going to add in, and it'll be kind of the designated, you know, same as actually. Same as actually, well, Hundred and Eighty-Fifth, that little section is a little bit of a question mark so that we don't know who's gonna own that yet and all that. So digressing a little bit, so.
No, it's okay.
I think the network is.
I just watched that, walked that a few days ago, the, the Valley View by the cemetery and everything.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, huge opportunity there if we could get it done on Beardsley. But boy, that should be part of the bike plan that we do right-of-way, connecting downtown to the campus. That seems like a missed opportunity.
Yeah, that's, again, that's, you know, that, that Valley View is where we're gonna direct people. It's just, you know, we don't really want them on Beardsley with riding, with, riding with buses and stuff in there, so.
And you well knows, but you, when you jump across immediately off of, from the intersection of Main Street onto Valley View, there's hundred yards, two hundred yards where there's no sidewalk. Or and you, when you're walking, you're literally walking next to cars in the street, so, you know.
Yeah.
Low-hanging fruit right there as well, but I, I digress as well, so appreciate, appreciate the work.
Steve has his hand raised, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner, if you guys wanna.
Okay, so Steve, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, so like Sherman said, I think implementation, implementation's the tough part, but we did want to get the vision set. We will talk about things like cost and opportunities for road diets. And we want to talk to you about what it takes to do certain things. I would like to talk about Beardsley a little bit. So Beardsley will be the transit corridor. It currently is. Sound Transit, King County Metro and Community Transit have been working with the city as well with Uda Bothell and Cascadia College. And you guys know that the Husky Village is being rebuilt right now. So their frontage actually, that's gonna be unfortunately a five-lane road. And it has to be, there's just so many cars there. The buses are actually gonna stop in the outside lane. So the five lanes allows us to let the buses stop in line there. But on the Husky Village side, there will be a cycle track on top of the curb behind the bus stop. So that's where the bike facility will be, so that they will be outside of the buses driving through. And I think we even tried to get some layout on the north side of Beardsley between campus entrance and the fire station. Because the vision there would be to put a protected bike lane on that side as well. So we're trying to do what we can to, on current projects, to get to the vision that we're trying to all shoot for. So hopefully that's kind of a good thing that we're trying to work with the campus on then.
All right, thanks Steve. Other commissioners?
So I have a couple of thoughts. Everything Carsten said, Commissioner Curd said about the four oh five Bothell River Way crossing applies at one ninety-fifth. You've got vehicles there that are either accelerating freeway speed or coming off a freeway rather quickly. And I've, I've ridden that many times and you're, you're crossing traffic with them. So I, I think we all know it's a challenge, it involves other agencies. But getting from that North Creek Trail over downtown takes you over that crossing. And that's challenging. Also, Commissioner Dodd's comment on circles, as Transportation Planner Gong indicated, circles are great for increasing capacity, increasing the speed of flow through, all of which make it more challenging for bicycles. So, yeah, if there's a way to get around those, that'd be great. Rolling bicycles through there, you are putting slower bicycle traffic crossing lanes that you have just deliberately speeded up. So that, that does raise concern on a lot of our parts. And I guess the final thing I'd say is where we can do interim things, I think we should consider it. You know, the risk of interim actions is to become permanent. You don't really need that, what you want. On the other hand, i- if you can make it a little safer for me to get across the freeway, that'd be great. So let's try to keep that balance as well. So other, other feedback from commissioners?
I'd just like to respond to that.
Sure.
Commissioner, that, the, you know, crossings, we, just so everybody's aware, the crossings look over the Hundred and Ninety-Fifth interchange is going to be, there's a, in the, in the design already in, by Wash Dot because they're going to have inline bus stops on, on both sides for Sound Transit. And so to do, to get people to those buses, they're gonna ultimately have a new pedestrian crossing. So that's going to happen on Hundred and Ninety-Fifth. Again, it's timing, you're right, it's gonna be, involves, it involves other agencies. The same with the crossing over five twenty-seven. There's already, the plan is already in place to cross, you know, from the middle of the freeway into the Kenyon Park Business Park. And we're pushing really hard still to, you know, have them plan and design the portion that comes to the south side into, you know, the PCC parking lot or Fifteenth, um, kind of, kind of over in this direction, the south direction. So, you know, it's, those plans are, you know, are, trust me, already in there here and they're ready to, you know, we're just hoping that they keep on moving ahead with that. And, you know, I don't know, as far as you comment about roundabouts, I think, you know, traffic speeds through roundabouts are generally supposed to be slower. That's what they're meant to do is slow people down. You're right, they don't come to a complete stop, you know, which makes it, you know, ready, I'm ready to cross or is this guy gonna get me, you know? So they are, they do slow traffic down, but they slow them down fast more than like just leaving them going, let them go straight one way or another. So, you know, it's kind of what, you know, potato, potato.
Yeah, it, it is a challenge. You know, and the other thing about right-of-ways is the drivers are looking in multiple directions. They're trying to merge into that traffic. So they may not, they'll see a car before they'll see a bicycle.
At least they're stopped slowing down to look around. That's what we want them to do.
All right, well, thanks. Other commissioner comments?
Excuse me, I just noticed that we have an attendee with, hand up, Matt Carter. Shall I panel him in?
Sure.
I know this is a study session, but we generally accept comments, so. If indeed he, that was his intent.
There you go, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, please introduce yourself and make your comment.
Yeah, so I'm Matt Carter, I go and I live in Bothell, just north of Hundred and Ninetieth. And I can go and I can say, I'm really quite happy to go and see that there's a bicycling plan going on here because along with having to go and have the two cars to make certain I could get to my job, but I didn't have much money. I also have my bicycle, which I rode all the way to Seattle on the Burke Gilman. So improved on trails would be great. The concern I have though is I know on Hundred and Forty, we have a bike lane right now, but the sidewalks are so bad that I go and I regularly see families walking their trams and their children up the bike lane on the opposite side of the street, which is a hindrance for traffic going through, also for the bicyclers. And I frankly think puts the family at risk because there is no separation from the road in that lane. It's just a white stripe, which to me, I mean, I, I know Sherman put a lot of thought in this. I'd like to see more green in this because I'd like to go and see the pedestrians taken care of as well as the bicyclists, particularly down in the, you know, near the downtown area where you'd expect to have more walkers going through. And that's all I wanted to go and to add, just because, like I say, I've, I've seen people that kind of put themselves at risk by using the bike lane as a pedestrian way rather than going and, you know, leaving that for bicyclists or having a pedestrian pathway that's safe for, you know, bike, baby buggies, trams, you know, families walking together and things like that because of the narrow width that the old sidewalks have.
Did you say Hundred and Fourth?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought, I was, I just wanted to clarify.
The construction is on that, on the west side. So like I say, the, the families are typically walking up in that lane. And I mean, I've driven down and a couple of times I've had to go into the oncoming traffic because, you know, one of the family members kind of goes and veers off into the traffic.
All right, so I, I think I heard you asking us to be sure that the bicycle improvements don't come at a cost to pedestrian accessibility and that the need for pedestrian mobility also be considered.
Yeah, definitely, because if you don't have the pedestrian mobility around those bike lanes, the bike lanes are just going to go and be, you know, used by the families and such because it's a flatter, smoother surface, it's easy to get access. Which is why the, the shared use, I think it actually might be a better plan for, you know, closer towards that downtown area where you're gonna have more pedestrian load.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Andrews, I see your hand.
I hadn't thought about the comments that Mr. Carter made, but he's probably seen me walking in that bike lane now that I think about it because I'm always there and I'm always dodging cars with my dog because the sidewalk is, it's not only narrow, but it stops at a certain point. And I don't want to be on the other side of the road because there's a very narrow lane and if people are passing, my dog is going crazy. So he's, he's absolutely right and he's probably dodged me a time or two. So that's definitely something to think about.
All right, thank you. A continuity of these paths is another challenge where they're in segments and you have to choose to either cross the road where there is no crosswalk or walk where there is no sidewalk. Not quite a bike plan issue, but certainly an issue. Other comments? All right, seeing none. Did you get the feedback you were looking for at this stage of the process? Recognizing you'll be back?
Yeah, I think we have a consent, I think we have a consensus. I think everybody is on board with the Far Day Vision, which is a great and we can move forward and we will prepare to give you guys a little bit more information next time on, on implementation and costs, all the tough stuff, so.
Okay, well, great. I think we'll finish this agenda item and then move on to our next couple. So thanks, Transportation Planner Gong. We'll look forward to hearing from you again in September.
Great, talk to you guys later.
Thank you.
So our next item is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business before us?
We do not have any unfinished business tonight to discuss.
Okay, that's great. How about reports from staff?
So we are, we are working on scheduling out Planning Commission for the rest of the year and figuring out what projects we're still working on and what dates we hope to bring those to Planning Commission. The other thing that I think would be worth noting is we have received this week three grant awards. We have an award for the middle housing, so that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which Senior Planner Boyd discussed in his presentation. We received an eighty thousand dollar grant for climate change work. So we can, we can provide you with both of those applications, I think, just so you can kind of see what's coming. And then we got notice also from the Department of Commerce that they are releasing allocated funds for each jurisdiction, updating their comprehensive plan. And so we anticipate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Commerce for the comp plan update. So lots of good news in terms of funding this week and more things that you'll see on the twenty twenty-three docket and things that'll be coming to you for that.
That's very good news. Any other reports or are we good?
I noted that we put the schedule for September and beyond, which we only have July in here. So we apologize for that, but we are planning on bringing, so the TDR program is, we're working with Burke on that, so we hope to have that ready for you all on September seventh. You'll also be hearing about the bike plan in September. And then the parking reductions will also be coming. And then I believe there's a landmark preservation code amendment that'll be coming to you all. So we'll have a busy September, but we're hoping by mapping out the rest of the year, we can try to keep meetings flowing and, and have, have a little bit short, get everyone home a little bit sooner, maybe.
Well, good, good. And, you know, as a reminder to everyone, we do not meet in August. So there are not that many meetings left in the year, actually.
It, it is a little weird to think about October really only being two months away.
Two meetings.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any reports from members? Commissioner Curd?
It's me, with a report from a member. I want to recognize all the great work that went into the Fourth of July celebration and again with parties in the streets, which are amazing. So Fridays in downtown Bothell is already shaping up to be a great success and activating the space that we've so carefully planned. I had mentioned before, a, a long time ago, I guess now, that I was interested in restarting some missing metal tours or performing another missing metal tour. And that offer still stands. I have a number of emails to send to staff after this meeting, so I'll reengage on that conversation. I just think that it would be helpful to have another opportunity for people who weren't able to make the last one and also engage more community members in the walk. So, yeah.
And you've got a good shot at better weather, too.
We'll see.
Thank you, Commissioner Curd. Commissioner Dodd?
Chair, you kind of stole my comment, but I was gonna say, let's try to get that other walk in this season rather than January or whenever we did the last one.
December, I believe.
Yeah, same difference, right? So that would be awesome. And if you need help planning, happy to help form a subcommittee if that would be of assistance. And I think it'd be great, I, I think we only had a couple of council members present last time, maybe just the mayor? I'm not sure. So it would be awesome to try to get more attendance from there, too. If that is something that maybe staff could help us coordinate so we don't break quorum rules by talking to multiple people about the same thing.
Yeah, I think whatever you all plan, just let us know so that we can advertise a potential quorum. And then, not to say that they can make it, but we do have a new city manager who might be someone to invite to that tour and a new deputy director who would like to participate in said tour, too.
So you might reach out to those two individuals and see their availability and kind of work around that. Maybe September?
Sounds like an excellent idea, yep.
If I may, we did the first one ever, the inaugural first one in September last year and it was perfect weather, so, yeah.
So a thought there. All right, other reports from members? Seeing none as I look back and forth? All right, do we have any items to report to council? I don't think anything rose on this agenda to that level yet. Okay, well, seeing none, I think we're ready to adjourn. It's been interesting going hybrid. I guess we'll have more practice. So it was good to see those of you we've seen, good to meet. And I hope everyone has a good August off, do some fun things and come back in September with a full agenda, I guess. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Dodd?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? Commissioner Gustafson?
I second.
So it's.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, the July twentieth Bothell Planning Commission meeting is adjourned at nine eleven. We'll see you all in September, next meeting, September seventh. Goodnight all.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.